We're a few minutes late. I'd love to call a meeting to order today, January 29th. Will you please join us in the pledge to the leaders?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now is the time for citizen input, if you would, to speak about something that is not on our agenda today. And if you do have any documentation, you should leave your documentation with Sharon, please. Rondo?
I think I wrote the wrong date down today. Should I put 29? 29, thank you. I am Rondo. I've been a resident for almost 30 years and an activist a lot of that time. And I want to present another subject for consideration. A lot of you know I spent some time in our Deschutes County jail the last few years, a little over six months. And rather than speaking this morning directly to what I have been accused of, I want to make a couple accusations myself. Information does not leave that jail. I was attacked several times, threatened, attacked many times, and there is no criminal justice system within our jail. That is a fact. In fact, what is the routine is to eliminate the information even by the complainant or the victim. And I believe that we should make that stop. People are afraid of their safety in this jail. As much as I like and have had contact with our Captain Schultz, he is working on social reform in there on other issues. I know that he has made attempts to make, address safety issues in this jail, but our jail is unsafe. Another issue is that we have inmates that are starved. And I mean, not to death necessarily, but literally starving. And that means profit over nutrition. For those of you who don't know, that is a private jail owned, operated by our county. And I think we should assert our authority a little bit more in my understanding. I want to leave with one question, so that maybe we can share this understanding and my concern. We let out maybe 20 people a day at the doorsteps of those, of that jail in our community. And I want to ask the question, put the question to us. What are our expectations of those people who are leaving, entering our community, who have been put through unsafe conditions, which is a form of abuse, and literally being starved during that time of nutrition? Thank you.
Thank you, Rondo. Next, I'd like Doralee Kingen.
I want to say welcome to Doralee. So we've been communicating for years about the topic she's going to speak on, and I did it later today to share with all three commissioners.
Yes. Yeah, it is pretty well-known, and you'd asked me to come today to address community living, co-housing, and MUA-type zoning. Do you want me to elaborate on the topic, or to what extent?
Show support and explain, yeah, your interest in the topic.
Basically, what it would be is an option for MUA, non-farmable land, or non-productive land, however you want to say, to have a minimal amount of other housing in a community-type form, not for development by developers, but on a, like, one-acre per-house option. So you'd have to have at least two acres to do it, to keep the density down and to keep the rural area rural. Because there are, there is a need, especially for seniors, since I'm one, for additional type housing that would give them more community, socialization, keeping out of rest, retirement homes or rest homes where there's more care required for those that are more isolated. It can be for the seniors, it can be potentially for any age group that wants to build a community, small community living. It would not, community living, co-housing, be one of the large co-housing-type facilities. It would be more small communities, so you have houses kind of grouped, and the remainder of the area would be for rural purposes. I mean, whether you're grazing sheep, or cutting hay, or whatever. This did go in front of, well, not quite in front, but it was put in a bill last year for the longer legislative session in Salem. It didn't get on the final agenda, so it wasn't addressed. But I know Tony had said that the ADUs are up for consideration and rural MUA-type property, and wanted me to promote this as another option. Or it would be written up so that you'd have to own, and you'd own the land its entirety in your footprint, namely your house and smaller yard, because no, most people don't want an additional acre to take care of. You'd have HOA-type dues, and you'd live in a community. You wouldn't have to necessarily have a community room unless you want. You could have swimming, you know, one of those wave pools, or whatever. But to give another option for a living arrangement and still maintain a rural atmosphere, which we need too. I would not like to see all the MUA land develop, per se, with houses all lined up, and most people out there wouldn't. So I'm trying to look at another option to give people a consideration.
Doralee, thank you so much. It was Senate Bill 708 that you had last year, wasn't it?
Correct.
Yes. So, you know, for the next year's session, the long session, we should, you know, you should come back.
We will.
Before. And thank you for your service, too.
Oh, thank you.
For speaking today.
So, one thing, we'll keep an eye on a single accessory dwelling unit for rural property. That's a discussion that's happened in Salem. So, as I say, this, it's state law that defines this opportunity. We don't even have the opportunity in Deschutes County to say, oh, let's go do this, you know, this vision that you would have. So if there's traction on a single accessory dwelling unit, that would be a place to start. So we'll keep an eye on that at the legislative session also.
Okay.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
And now I'd like to call David Mount. And David, if you want to just sit down here at the table, it's fine, at this little table.
To address the Central Arken Veterans Village that's proposed on county land, which I live in, the, in Chester Park homeowners, which directly abuts that property. There are four lots that would be directly affected, in other words, they backed directly up to that. You know, our concerns are, you know, being homeowners, that, you know, in, since this development was built, the, there have been additional facilities built in the area, which include, you know, the 911 center, the, what do you call it, the regional recovery center is there, and, you know, just bringing more items around that area. Now, the sheriff's department has added warming shelters there. So that's bringing other people that are into the area and also walking the neighborhood. And these are all single-family homes. There are 73 lots within our HOA. And, you know, there are, will be concerns, you know, to add that much more element, not only for safety, but for property values. The other thing we'd be concerned with is that property with that many people in there, you know, we're talking 15 individual huts, as it is, you still would need, you know, two points of emergency access to get to that. You know, one would be directly off the street, and there is an easement from our neighborhood into that area, which would not be a good access point, but you would still need two access points for emergency vehicles. There are, you know, grading issues like you're always going to have on any property. The four lots that back up to that, there's going to be a need to require a small retaining wall because of the slope there. Their fences are already leaning, but, you know, there's not much they can do on that side, because it's your property. But just, you know, we want to keep our neighborhood association informed on what's going on with this, and try to keep up to speed on it. Thank you for your time.
Can I ask you a couple questions? Because we're, this has moved a little faster than we thought maybe it would, but one is, the warming shelter was for this year. We're not making any commitment beyond that. But is that, are you seeing impact from that in your neighborhood?
We have a little. I mean, either my wife or I walk the neighborhood almost every day. Take the dog. But we've noticed that we'd have some older campers and stuff parked on the street, primarily in front of juvenile center, because they've got the most room there. But, you know, they'd be there for, you know, three or four days, and then gone. You know, the sheriff's department's cruising that street all the time, so I would assume that they are keeping some diligence in that regard.
There's been some walking the street. I've seen some walking.
Because people have to get there from some, either get there or leave, you know, it's only partial, it's an overnight place, it's not a 24-hour, so.
Yeah.
They're kind of, people that are staying there, having to leave in the morning, or fairly early, so. Because that was just our, it was kind of an emergency situation. We had a space this year, and that's how the county ended up with doing it. But I don't think it's our intent to do that in the future. We're trying to figure out another place.
It's still a need.
Yeah.
Well, it was a couple of years ago that Methodist Church offered that for women and children. You know, and granted, it is a need, you know, and it's, like I say, it's only temporary, because it's not there during the summer months.
Yeah. The other question I was going to ask, do you have a homeowners' association meeting coming up anytime soon, or?
We, our annual meeting will be, we haven't scheduled our annual meeting yet. You know, Board of Directors will be meeting in the last week of February, so.
Yeah, please keep us notified on that. Thank you very much for, you know, we look at a map, and we see the, you know, four properties back-to-back with it. So thank you so much for getting engaged, because this is a conversation that we have had in our work session, and the media did pick it up. So, you know, it's a conversation we're going to have to proceed through also. So thank you for your participation.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. And Diane. Is there any other citizen input? You need to fill out a blue form, please? Or you can do that when you're done.
Okay. You may speak.
Yes, you may.
Okay.
Please identify yourself.
Okay. My name is Jake Elliott, and I'm from the same neighborhood as Dave and Diane. I'm the past president of the HOA in that area. When we first found out about this the other night, from news reports, obviously, we were concerned. There was instant phone messages going around the neighborhood about what we had found out. We were kind of surprised that, it seems that this is a fairly developed plan, considering none of us even knew about it. And it is concerning for the reasons that Dave mentioned. In addition, if you look at the north end of Bend in general, just beyond the sheriff's complex, the fire department complex, there's homeless encampments back there. You go across Highway 20, there's homeless encampments back in there. You go across Hundle, and you see all the RVs and trailers and all that, there's encampments back in there. And as was just reported last night or the night before, City of Bend just spent, what, $85,000 cleaning up homeless trash at Juniper Ridge, back in that area. It's obviously an issue, and it doesn't come without cost. We tend to, the news reports tend to always show the bright side of things. As Dave mentioned, we have seen people camping in our area. And as you look over on the Hundle Street area, there's tons of people camped there. I work on the northeast side of Redmond, and where our new building is located, for the last three years, that entire area is in total homeless encampments. The police, in fact, I just came from there, the police were just there, not, this is 15 minutes ago. The police are there on a regular basis. And in terms of enforcement, seems to be no enforcement. There has been no change in the three years that we've had our building out there. And it seems to be a problem that's continuing to get worse, not better. I also would, in terms of these coalitions that seem to be being set up for this particular project, I would refer you back to what I would call the debacle of the Bethlehem Inn, in which Deschutes County lost about $2 million on that deal, by having a loan to the Bethlehem Inn that was not repaid. And in addition, moving money from the city of Bend to the county of Bend, which I realize are different entities, but from a taxpayer standpoint, that's all our pockets. That if we're going to have county property, county funds, city funds, I wouldn't doubt there's probably some state involvement somehow, or whatever, that there'd be financial responsibility here, accountability, so that we don't have another $2 million debacle like we did with Bethlehem Inn. And I just think that this needs to be thoroughly investigated. We need to have, I don't know, I missed the beginning of the meeting, so I don't know if it was discussed, what is going to happen in terms of public comments, public discussions, public meetings. But I think something of this nature definitely needs that. And it also concerns me that we're talking about a 10-year trial plan. I mean, isn't that a rather large swath of time to consider 10 years before we decide whether or not it's working or not? That seems excessive.
Thank you, Jake, for coming in today.
Okay.
I appreciate, I think one thing that did happen is, one story kind of went beyond really what's happening, if you watched, and then there was another story locally, so some of the information was incorrect. And, yeah.
Yeah, thank you for coming today, and we got your email as well, so thank you for that. And we'll try to get in contact with you and your homeowners' association soon to talk about what the ideas are and that sort of thing. Because we, we were aware of the houses, we, I don't know that we talked to any homeowner or association people, I don't think so. We weren't, so we'll talk to you soon.
Okay.
Thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the community that would like to speak today? Okay. Oh, Jake, you do need to fill out your blue form. Thank you.
You're in there.
And give it to Sharon. All right. Anything?
Next item, consent agenda.
Yes.
I do support, there's five sets of minutes here, that was right before the meeting. The last two is what I was researching before I ran down here. So I support those minutes, and the consent agenda as presented.
Yeah, I do, too. So I'll move, unless you have anything.
Uh, that.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Okay, and the chair votes yes for the consent agenda. So now we have item number six, the public hearing. Anne Mathieu, this is the time and place set for hearing on land use file number 247-19-000870-A. Review of the Land Use Board of Appeals remand of land use file number 247-18-000128-AD.
The hearing's body, the board of county commissioners in this case, will take testimony and receive written evidence concerning an administrative determination application from Wavesir of Oregon LLC to allow marijuana production at 24350 and 24360 Dodds Road. All testimony shall be directed at the hearing's body. At the conclusion of this hearing, the hearing's body will deliberate towards a decision, continue the hearing, or deliberations to a date and time certain. The hearing will proceed as follows. Staff will provide a brief staff report. Applicant will present testimony and evidence. Appellant, opponents, and proponents will then be provided the opportunity to present their testimony and evidence, and then any other interested parties. The applicant, as the party bearing the burden of proof, will then be afforded the, an opportunity to present rebuttal testimony. If requested by the hearing's body, staff will provide closing comments. One amendment to standard procedures is that on remand hearings, testimony is limited to those parties that participated in previous county proceedings. And a full written version of the hearing procedures are available on the room, a table on the side of the room. Next, commissioners must disclose any ex parte contacts, prior hearing observations, biases, or conflicts of interest.
So I've been through this whole process, you know, just studied the record, and yeah, I have no conflicts or biases on this matter.
And I did go to the address and the prior hearing. I did make a physical assessment. So, no others.
And same here, during the last hearing, I drove out in the area to kind of get the general lay of the land, but I don't think I have any conversations other than hearing-related or at the hearing, any members, and have no bias or conflicts that way.
I'll acknowledge, or ask the question of the room, does any party wish to challenge any commissioner based on ex parte contacts, biases, or conflicts? See none, I believe formally, Chair Adair, last item to open the public hearing.
I would like to open the hearing and direct staff to proceed with the brief staff report. Thank you, Mathieu.
Again, what's before you is a proposal for marijuana production in exclusive farm-use zone. A brief overview is that construction involves 36,000 square-foot indoor grow room with a total of 10,000 square feet of mature marijuana plant canopy. Also included are two 1,500-square-foot buildings for ancillary services, including water treatment, secure waste management, as well as power supply. And then also acknowledging a perimeter fence around the proposed production area. For general information, properties located east of Bend, just off of Highway 20 and Dodds Road, zooming into the property, the images, the development areas in the southeast corner of the property, the line showing the two properties, these are currently two legal lots of record. As part of the uncontested record before, the applicant proposed a lot consolidation to combine the two lots into one legal lot of record.
So a question about that. So that would be following this process? It's like it's committed to, but it hasn't been done yet?
Correct. So the lot consolidation has been approved, but not completed at this point.
Thank you.
The applicant has two years to complete the consolidation, or otherwise the approval becomes void.
Mathieu, I wasn't listening when you said the colors. So the yellows where the facilities themselves are, and the two red lots are the ones that are planned to be consolidated?
Correct. The red outlines are of the property dimensions. The yellow identifies where the development is proposed. And the next is a zoom-in of that yellow area, identifying the location of the perimeter fencing, the larger indoor grow facility, and the ancillary buildings. History on the project, it was reviewed administratively, and staff issued an administrative approval of the project. That decision was appealed, and the board called it up for review on appeal. Board reversed staff's decision, denying the application. That denial was subsequently appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals reviewed the decision and remanded on two issues. Those issues being separation from youth activity center in particular, the definition or what constitutes a youth activity center, and secondly, odor control and compliance with those criteria. In the board's decision, the board found the property to the south is a youth activity center, commonly referred to as Rhinestone Ranch. Testimony indicated and included facts that youth-oriented equestrian activities take place on the property, and approximately 50 to 70 kids are on the property any given week. Second, youth activity center was identified in the board's decision. This is the property due east, adjacent to the subject property, where testimony in the record identified 4H-related activities and biweekly meetings and practices the months of January to August. And again, acknowledging that the board found these to be youth activity centers, thereby subject to the separation distance of which the proposal did not comply. In Luba's findings, they found that it, an applicant or property, and would have no practical way of identifying these identified youth activity centers or youth-oriented activities occurring on these properties. And in sum, as applied in this case, the county's interpretation is amorphous and uncertain, and conclusion that it, those, that conclusion is unreasonable, and therefore remanded back to the county.
So before we go into odor, but as I understand it, they're not really looking for new facts to prove a youth activity center or to clarify it. They've just kind of shut the door on that idea. Is that correct?
That.
Not, that's going to lose, it's not that idea, but that issue.
I believe in the Land Use Board of Appeals opinion that they found that the facts of the case and the characteristics of those identified youth activity centers were of a characteristic in a practice that was unforeseeable, and therefore was unable to be construed as a, or defined as a youth activity center. But I want to acknowledge that the Land Use Board of Appeals came to that conclusion, but also remanded this issue back to the county.
But are we supposed to reconsider the facts, or are we done with that criteria?
This is before the board for reconsideration, and it's based on the merits of the record, as well as any testimony provided today or through these proceedings. But there may be characteristics or limitations of these particular uses that may be able not to get to that threshold question.
I guess I'll ask a little different, so when I read their decision, and I read our decision, I read the staff's decision, and then I read their decision, what seemed to me is the way we define, you know, this youth activity center definition has evolved over time, and we've just done another hearing where we, you've kind of used more specific language as to how you would identify something as youth activity center, et cetera. But I guess what I'm, so I look at this decision, and to me, the decision we made here, like, they criticized, and I understand why they did, our use of the word, because it was, the word "center" was a verb and not a noun, and you can't say that you have a center because activity is centered there. And I get, I get what they're saying. That was really never my vision of why these were youth activities. So however that became their target, or issue, that was not my understanding of why we're doing, calling these youth activity. It was the issue of intensity of use, frequency of use, et cetera. But the one that, to me is, and I get what they're saying about needing to, for us to, you know, it needs to be a foreseeable, or to someone buying the property, understand that for the fairness of that. that for the fairness of that. But I would, but there were some elements in this that are foreseeable if you'd looked at the property or seen what the neighbors do. If you'd been, I mean, the Rhinestone Ranch has signs, et cetera, the activities are pretty common. So are we supposed to repackage that and send it back, or is it off the table? Or are you saying we can decide whether we want to do either?
I'd like to defer to legal counsel. We're getting beyond my scope of expertise. No, but I appreciate the question.
You see what I'm asking?
Absolutely, and I believe you're touching on the foreseeability factor that's been raised, as well as the Luba's opinion that they, it being unreasonable to construe or conclude that a property owner could identify these characteristics.
Okay. Adam Smith, Assistant Legal Counsel. I think probably the best way to answer your question, Commissioner Henderson, is to just know, I mean, Deschutes County Code requires a hearing on remand. Certainly, the purpose of the hearing, the parties may introduce legal arguments, but they also may introduce additional evidence, testimony on these kinds of things. And so I think to try and limit the parties to only legal arguments and not allow them to, or to introduce additional factual information is practically difficult. And so I think if there's new facts that come up, if there's new issues that come up by the parties that cause the commissioners to consider the issue differently, I think that's well within the scope of the remand.
So what I hear you saying is, we can get new facts, we can get new arguments about this, the separation distance issue, criteria. Are you saying then we can decide whether we want to kind of re, decide, redecide it in, when we get to deliberations? It is still on the table, so to speak, or is it, in our discussion, I felt like you were kind of saying it's off the table when we talked about it a while ago. But is it still on the table? When, when Luba tells us to have a new hearing, do they want us to deal with this issue or not?
Yes, I think Luba is instructing the county to consider its previous interpretation of the youth activity center term and the application of that to the facts of this case, but within the more narrow parameters that Luba set forward in their remand decision. Primarily that, that this needs to be foreseeable, that it's unreasonable if these are not factors that may be foreseeable to an applicant.
So that would mean, in my, my understanding is, that we will, we should encourage or hope there'll be testimony from both sides about why it is foreseeable or why it's not foreseeable? That that would be, I mean, we have some information from the original record, but I'm saying we would, I personally would encourage any, any new evidence about that. Is that?
Yes, I think.
So if we're going to do a good job on that issue?
It could be appropriate to encourage new evidence on those topics and to have people introduce those features. I think part of what the struggle is, is there was a fair amount of conversation before Luba and even before the commissioners before about whether or not these things were foreseeable. I mean, there was some conversation around those points before. And Luba found at least the elements that we had noted on the foreseeability of these particular uses as a youth activity center apparently was not sufficient for Luba to think that they were foreseeable enough, so to speak, to not be unreasonable. And so I would, if, if there's additional testimony, if there's additional facts that were maybe not put on the record before, to demonstrate the foreseeability of these neighboring uses, then that would be relevant. The same, we already had a number of facts before. Luba decided those weren't foreseeable, so it would have to be something new.
But we didn't, at least as one commissioner, I, that wasn't on our plate of how we determine a youth activity center. That Luba's, in my mind, has created this criteria, which I, I agree with, actually, that it's a good criteria. We were always talking more about things like, how many people are involved, what, does it have to be permitted or lie? We had a different set, so that's why I said it's evolved, so good. And I, I kind of understood we weren't going to redo this, so if, if we weren't, I didn't, we didn't really need to hear more, but it sounds like it would be great to hear more on this issue.
I would, I would certainly encourage the commissioners to encourage the parties to set forth their arguments, their legal arguments and the facts that they have, that's all relevant to whether or not this is a youth activity center. The factors that the board is considering on whether it's a youth activity center, including the foreseeability of those factors. I guess, to circle back, and I understand the tension here, some of those facts were known to the, to the commissioners and were argued by the county before Luba before. We argued before Luba that, hey, these facts do make this a foreseeable, that these land use is foreseeable, that these uses are occurring within a frequency, there's a website, some of those, all of those things were mentioned to Luba. Luba apparently did not think that those were sufficient factors to determine that it was foreseeable. So we need to, I would recommend that if.
And our decision doesn't say that.
No, the decision.
The decision doesn't say, as one of the five reasons we think it's a youth activity center is because we felt it was foreseeable. So then if we do a new decision and we deal with this issue, it seems like we would identify why it is or isn't foreseeable. And that would be in our decision, not in what's argued by legal counsel, but what at the appeal, but it, so yeah, I think I understand. Do you get, understand what I was asking?
Yes.
It seems, yeah, okay.
I mean, the long and short of it, we argued that it was foreseeable before Luba. Luba disagreed, and that's the nature of the remand, that, and the tension of the remand that the commissioners will, will struggle. And this is not unusual, that a remand is a bit amorphous, and part of a remand is figuring out what all is on the table for, for discussion. I mean, that's a pretty common occurrence, that the scope of the remand is one of the remand issues. So I think we've been in this situation before and will be there again.
Right. Thank you. Second issue being the odor control plan. As proposed, the applicant has proposed an ionization system to mitigate and address odor produced by the operation. Application includes a site-specific engineer's report attesting to the effectiveness of the system and conclusions that it complies with our odor control standards in Deschutes County Code. The board's decision in detail acknowledged the discussion that took place, but the board did not reach a specific decision on those issues. That's of merit because the Land Use Board of Appeals acknowledged this discussion and, but lack of conclusion or decision on this issue, and therefore remanded the issue back. I think it's valuable to add informally that the parties to the case, the county, the applicant, the appellant, did not contest the board. The board had had in adopting the staff's administrative findings relative to odor, that that issue had been resolved, and so it was considered law of the case. But however, Land Use Board of Appeals took it upon themselves to make these findings and, and remand the issue back to the county. So at the conclusion of testimony, the board has a few options to either close the public hearing, written record, and deliberate, close the hearing, leave the written record open to a date certain, or continue both the public hearing and written record to a date certain. I do want to acknowledge that Deschutes County Code requires a decision within a hundred and twenty days of the remand being initiated by the applicant, and that date is April fourth of this year. So happy to answer any questions, but one note is, since the initiation of the remand, we have received one letter from the applicant, and that was presented to you at your stations this morning on the dais. But again, happy to answer questions now or later.
Okay, we, we do have a letter from Corinne Selka. Did you want to address? Thank you. Please identify yourself for the record. Good morning, Boarder, Chair Adair, members of the board. My name is Corinne Selka with Emerged Law Group. I'm here today on behalf of the applicant, Waveseer of Oregon LLC. I have with me here today the principal of Waveseer, David Rosen. And sitting behind us, I also have our mechanical and acoustical engineer, Roger Whitaker of Solera Consulting. Before I jump into the applicant's presentation today, I'd like to quickly address Commissioner Henderson's question to staff right before we started about the scope of this remand. To be clear, this is not a second bite at the apple. This is not a chance for opponents to come in and come up with another new way to deny this application. The opponents have had plenty of opportunity to present arguments and testimony and evidence to you, and they've done so. We've appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals, and Luba remanded back to you on two very discreet issues, which we'll be discussing. Our position is that there should be no new evidence that, that the decision of Luba was not based on, based on not enough information available to you. The facts in the case and the evidence in the case are in the current record. We should not be looking elsewhere. What Luba has decided is that frankly, it was the closest you could possibly come to a reversal. But they've remanded it back to you to see if there's any other possible interpretation of youth activity center that you could make that would fall within their reasoning, which you've already heard from Mr. Martin, was needing to find a, a practical way for an applicant to identify this particular use in a way that's not amorphous or unreasonable. So that's what we'll be discussing here today. Mr. Martin also went through the procedural status of this case, but I'd like to give a little more flavor to that by giving you the timeline. We've been before you previously, in fact, we've been before the county for two years. This application was first submitted in February of 2018. Staff approved us. It was appealed, and your decision was made in February of 2019. Luba remanded this case back to you in October of 2019, and we're here today on that remand hearing on these two very limited issues. Luba's remand gives us a chance to do the right thing today, and the right thing would be to allow this applicant on a hundred acres of EFU land to operate their farm use. It's time to make a decision, final decision in this case, so the applicant can move on and start to operate, and the candidate can move on to more important matters. So let's turn to the two matters that Luba remanded on. The first one that we discussed is the interpretation of youth activity center. Mr. Martin had already explained your decision, your original decision in this case on youth activity center, which was to determine that four H activities and that the activities at the Rhinestone Ranch rise to a, to the level of a youth activity center due to their inherent characteristic as being a place where activities center around youth on a regular basis. In response to that interpretation, Luba stated, "A property owner or applicant would not have any practical way of identifying whether those youth-oriented activities are occurring within the separation buffer surrounding any particular EFU-zoned property." As applied in this case, the county's interpretation of youth activity center is so amorphous and uncertain that we conclude it is unreasonable. So the main factor that Luba is looking at here is notice. What can put an applicant on notice that a certain use exists, which they need to be at least a thousand feet away from? And when we look at this, we think about due diligence on a property, and I think about my due diligence in buying my home. Maybe several of you have you have had this experience yourselves. A home comes on the market, you go see it, you like it. Usually that day, or maybe the next day, you put an offer in. You get a small window of a due diligence to do some inspections. You might walk around the neighborhood. Note, for me, I noted it was close to coffee shops and restaurants. It was close to a park. I liked the location. I did not stalk my neighbors. I didn't go back day after day or night after night to see what activities those neighbors were engaged in or who was frequenting their homes. My home went on sale in the spring. We closed within thirty days. I didn't wait to the summer to see what activities were taking place on neighboring properties in the summertime. I didn't wait to see what other activities might occur in the winter. The timing of when an applicant comes to look at a property, it is not practical and it is not reasonable to expect a future buyer of property to, to go through all the different seasons to see what may be happening on surrounding properties. They take a general look, they do a physical inspection, and perhaps for something like this, where there are more regulations than for someone buying a home, you look at permit history. Are there any land use approvals? Are there licenses? Are there any authorizations for, for particular uses on the surrounding properties? In this case, as the record shows, there was no evidence of that. For the neighboring Galucci property or the Rhinestone Ranch property, sure. First of all, I'll, I'll state that I do not recall that in this record, there was any evidence of what was visible from a public road. So I'll note that first. I don't, I don't know that there's anything in the record that you can point to as substantial evidence to show what activities were visible on the ranch from a public road. But assuming that you could see the stables, a barn, that is all consistent with an allowed farm use on EFU land. There's nothing to suggest that that represents something other than a farm use. There's nothing to suggest that that would indeed suggest a youth activity center. Even if you saw children riding on ponies, the, the one out of four or five times you go by the property, there's nothing to show that, to make you think that that is just a family member or friends of the children coming over for a quick ride. The farm use that's allowed is the training and stapling of aquines. Maybe that's training. Maybe the riding that they're seeing around is, is the training of the horses that's part of the farm use. For the four H club activity, I'm assuming those, those meetings take place inside the home. There's nothing in the record to suggest that, that something was visible from a public road to indicate that something other than rural residential uses were taking place. I think Mr. Martin mentioned that the meet, the four H meetings occurred biweekly. Even if you happen to go by the property ten times, if you don't go on the day of the meeting, there's no way to know that there's some sort of meeting going on. Again, those could have been play dates. They could have been the mom, the friends of the, the mother's children, and the moms were getting together for a book club. There, there's no practical way to identify that this is a particular use which this applicant needed to stay a thousand feet away from. I do understand that. I do understand that last week, you all deliberated in a different matter to talk about the definition of youth activity center. I'm not commenting on the facts of that case because I don't represent that applicant, and I don't know the facts of that case. But to the extent that you would be using a similar analysis, or the use of similar factors that were discussed in those deliberations, I want to talk a little bit about that. Some of the factors Commissioner Henderson already mentioned, and the fact that you found that those might be foreseeable, but let's talk about that. Some of the factors that you talked about in the prior deliberation were whether or not they were buildings or areas specific to the youth activities. Again, on the Rhinestone Ranch, to the extent that there's a barn or a stable, nothing suggests that is for youth activity. That all suggests that it's for farm-related equine facilities. You talked about the frequency, your regularity of the use, the youth activity event. Again, as I just explained, even if you see children riding on ponies, even if you see children cleaning and learning how to clean and wash the horses, there is no way to know that that is not simply just family or friends. There's nothing to suggest that this is a specific center that was built for the specific purpose of educating these youth. Again, another factor, organized group activity with adult supervision. How would an applicant know? How would anyone know if there's adults and kids around? How do you know that's just not the parents going for a ride with their children? Another factor that was discussed in the deliberation was marketing and social media, and this one was particularly troubling. There are, I don't know if you've heard, there are websites that are fake. People are buying things, giving their credit card money to buy products from a website, and the product never comes because the website was fake.
Well, so I want to ask you about that. I mean, but wouldn't it put you on notice that you'd go across the street or you'd contact them if you thought there was a business? If that's, if you don't like that criteria because of the risk of fakeness, practically speaking, and due diligence, wouldn't you go ask somebody instead of?
Sure. Let's look at this particular example.
I did want to point out in the record, we have a picture with 14 students with helmets on out in their arena. So 14 students isn't just someone coming over for a ride, one person. They're all lined up, they've got an instructor in the picture.
Sure. We don't know where that picture was taken from, though, if that was, could be seen from a public road. I'm assuming you don't want an applicant to trespass on the property, and so we have to, you'd have to see those 14 students with helmets up close from a public road.
Well...
But let me get back...
Trespass, this is central Oregon, you'd probably just go knock on their door. I mean, if you're really trying to investigate it, wouldn't you go knock on the neighbor's door if you'd saw a lot of kids with helmets?
A lot of cars coming in.
Well, okay, so let me get to this. This is, I think, part and parcel of your question, Commissioner Henderson. In this particular case with the Rhinestone Ranch, additional due diligence was made. So let's assume, right, this is all hypothetical. Let's assume somebody sees some children, a great number of children with helmets riding on horses. So they go to the Secretary of State's Business Division. There is no registered business in the state of Oregon for the Rhinestone Ranch. They go to Deschutes County. There are no land use approvals for youth activity, or for any commercial kind of activity at the Rhinestone Ranch. There are no, there's no business license for the Rhinestone Ranch. There are no event permits or other permits for these types of youth activities at the Rhinestone Ranch.
So did all that happen in this case? Did someone do that before they bought the property?
The evidence in the record that you have before you shows the lack of permits, licenses...
Yeah, I get that, but did someone look?
Perhaps they did.
No, I'm asking if they did. I mean, you represent the owner, the buyer of the land, did they look?
I've not inquired as to the people on the ground...
I don't remember the record, though.
Excuse me?
Yeah, I don't remember the record, so I'm asking you if in the record, someone testified that they'd looked, done this due diligence.
I don't, I'm unsure. I don't remember if in the record, there's a statement that that particular due diligence was done prior to the purchase, but I also don't think it matters because...
Well, that's a good question because you kind of said, one of the reasons that it's not foreseeable is because, so the reverse of that would be, if you did find a record, then that's foreseeable that it could be a youth activity? Is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is that if there were some sort of land use approval, or event permit, or business license on that property, that Luba's issue about a practical way of identifying that particular use, I think, would be covered. I don't think I would be able to argue that there was no practical way to identify that that use was taking place. I would have other arguments about whether or not it was...
Well, you could argue it. I mean, you couldn't just say, "Well, yeah, why would a buyer be expected to go check corporate records?" So you could argue it still. Maybe you'd have a weaker case, but you could still argue it, right? I mean...
Sure.
I drove there, and I did see a sign. It was against the pole at that time, but it did say Rhinestone Ranch, right at the front entrance to that property across the street.
Sure. I'm sure there's, let me give you another example, then. State law says that a school should be, or your code says, you know, that a school should be 1,000 feet away, at least 1,000 feet away, from a marijuana business. Let's assume that a school wanted to site on a particular property, and next door was a marijuana grow, but it was illegal. Would that school say, "Oh, we can't site here because we've got to be 1,000 feet away from this marijuana grow," even though it's illegal? I don't think so. I think what would happen is, the school wanted that property, they'd go get that property, and they would have the illegal grow removed. So in this instance, there's an important distinction between what Luba is talking about, notice, a practical way to identify a use, and the unauthorized, illegal, unlicensed use of a property. So in this instance, right, if we are concerned about the youth, we're concerned about youth, right? That's the whole point of making sure that a youth activity center is at least 1,000 feet away from a marijuana business. You are having, according to the record, 50 to 70 children come to a property that is not a registered business, that has no business license. There's no evidence that there's any insurance. There's no land use approval. There's no evidence that there's enough bathrooms, or that the septic system can accommodate that. There's no evidence that there's been a traffic plan, or an internal circulation plan for all these cars that are coming to drop off and pick up these children. There's no evidence that these people are certified, or licensed, or whatever the proper term is, to teach children. There's no evidence that there's, of how many adults per children there are. I would be more concerned, if I'm concerned about youth, I'm concerned about them being at this facility.
Yeah. It seems like you're kind of going off on a different tangent. Now, you're not really talking about whether it's practically knowable, or...
That's right.
Whatever. You're now talking about whether there should be this activity, or whatever. I, you know, I think we've heard your message about, you know, licenses and permits being a criteria. That was, I think that was the initial, when I was talking with our legal counsel on CDD about this at the start, what I, that was kind of the, I think, the initial concept that our staff had thought was the test, was licenses and permits. But we've, as commissioners, we've gone different directions. So to me now, and I'm just talking for me, but the license permits is one criteria that would help with due diligence, help with notice, et cetera. But the issue I think we're going to have to deal with is, is that the only criteria that makes sense? Or is there others, like we were talking about? And you were starting to talk about marketing and publicity and that sort of thing, so...
Okay. So before I get back to that, let me just finish up this to be clear. We made several different arguments to Luba in our appeal, and in Luba's opinion, they specifically didn't get to those arguments yet. And one of those arguments has to do with the, you know, the permit license issue. But the fact that Luba didn't get to it doesn't mean that that argument is gone. The only reason why they didn't get to it is because they found a remand, they remanded to you on a different issue. So they didn't need to get to these other arguments, but...
I guess I don't know if we need to get to those arguments about, I guess, I'm just trying to make it efficient here. I don't know if we're talking about that or not, I guess.
Well, I, the point I want to make is that while Luba found that what was lacking in your prior interpretation was the issue of notice, that these other issues are still out there, and that would, in our opinion, and our position is, still disqualifies the Rhinestone Ranch as a youth activity center. Because if what's happening there is what is, what's in the record, if that's what's really happening, it's an illegal use.
Sharon, I'm sorry, I didn't set a time limit for, you didn't check it? I checked as 10:40, so it's now 5:00 after 11:00. Just wanted you to be aware of that. And we do have someone else that does want to testify, too.
Sure, as the applicant?
No. Someone from the property across the street, so...
Oh, no, no, I understand. I understand. I was just going to say that as the applicant, though, who has the burden of proof...
Right.
I would ask to be given a little bit more time.
No, 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 you do have more time. Let's say another 10 minutes. Would that be, it's been, that would be 35 minutes, and then you can come back again after the last person speaks.
Sure. Well, I'll see if we can get through it in 10 minutes.
Okay.
Continuing with the importance of notice, right, to get back to the Luba opinion and their finding that your prior interpretation lacked this notice element. The importance of notice is, goes beyond just Luba's opinion. Luba has made other, there's other statutes, for example, the goalpost rule is what it's commonly known as, right, where an applicant is only, the applicant must only comply with the standards in effect on the time, at the time that the application was deemed complete. And that's so to make sure that the applicant knows exactly what they need to comply with in order to be approved. There's no moving target. Accordingly, Luba has also stated, in a different case, that the standards and criteria for permit approval must already exist in your code, and you can't manufacture standards to apply to deny this application. In another case, Luba has also stated that a local government's decision violates the law, where local government relies on factors or considerations unconnected to approval standards in the code to deny an application. So I just caution you that as you're thinking about applying certain factors now, right, and you've already indicated that your definition of youth activity center has morphed throughout this process, this is also a notice issue. The applicant needs to be on notice on the day that their application is complete about what the standards and criteria are, and those must be written in your code. There's no definition of youth activity center, and that term is not used anywhere else in the code.
Real quick, because I don't want to take your time. So, you know, there's four words, youth activity, three words, whatever it is. To me, it's kind of like the statute doesn't speak, so what we're doing legally is defining it by these cases, even that's what Luba's doing. They're putting foreseeability as a standard. And so, do you have, I mean, that is what we've, I don't know if it's morphed, it might have morphed some, but it's really been an attempt to define it, because there's been cases where people have said they have youth activities that we've said that, no, that isn't. So we've tried to hone in on it a little more carefully, but...
I think the difficulty is, is that if you, if you, as the governing body of the county, don't even know exactly what youth activity center means, how in the world is an applicant supposed to know? And is it fair to have an applicant guess about what you might have in mind when you use those three words? And I would argue that under the plain language of those three words, this applicant had no reason to believe that any of those such events were happening on the properties around them, and certainly had no reason to believe that an unauthorized, unlicensed, illegal youth activity events would constitute a youth activity center, barring them from being Lastly, I would argue that in this particular circumstances, in this case, in the record before you, there are no, there are no facts and no evidence to adequately show that there was a practical way for this applicant to know that the Rhinestone Ranch would constitute a youth activity center, or that the 4-H meetings occurring in neighboring property would constitute a youth activity center. Unless there are any other questions about youth activity center, I'll move on to the second issue that Luba raised.
Okay.
So the second issue that Luba raised was with regard to odor, and I think Mr. Martin did a very good job of explaining why this issue was a bit of a surprise. I've talked to your Assistant County Counsel, Adam Smith, and Mr. Smith and I did not believe that the odor issue was on the table. The way that your decision was written, the only findings in your original decision talk about the expert reports submitted by the applicant, and that those reports demonstrate compliance with the county code. Your prior decision also explains that the board adopted and incorporated by reference the code interpretations, findings of fact, and conclusions of law set forth in the November 16th, 2018 administrative decision. And that, in that administrative decision, staff found that the odor control standards had been met. So we believe that you've already decided this issue, that this isn't really a proper issue to be brought back on remand, that the only, based on your only findings in your original decision, which talk about the applicant's expert reports, there's nothing in there about any rebuttal, or any finding that those reports are not credible, or that the facility would not meet odor control standards? And based on the fact that your decision adopted staff's findings, finding that the applicant did meet odor control standards, we believe that... the applicant did meet odor control standards, we believe this, this issue is, is, is done. And that the, the county's final word on this is that that, uh, criteria has been met.
So why do you think Luba put this in?
Frankly, I think it was just as another second, um, uh, issue to be able to put it back on remand. I don't know that they read it as closely. They, they looked at, there is one sentence, so in your original decision, after all of your findings that talk about our experts' reports and what they show, the last sentence says, "The board discussed this standard but did not reach a decision." So Luba may have just looked at that one sentence.
Well, doesn't that mean, I mean, actually, we do this quite often when we've dealt with an issue. We have a ma, you know, a matrix of all the different things that are on the table. And if item number one or two stops a decision, we some, we oftentimes don't go on to three, four, or five. And so the fact that we say we didn't make a decision means we were thinking about it. I guess the other, I wonder if the other reason they were looking at it, thought it was still on the table. And why I still thought it was on the table is it was challenged, and you actually put in more evidence about odor control. Um, and the appellant put in evidence about the ionization system. So it seems to me we were thinking about it. Uh, we just didn't get there in the decision-making. But I, I mean, there's a record of dealing with this issue. It wasn't, so I guess that.
Sure. Well, I, um, I mean, I don't want to argue with you about that point. Um, the, the only thing to point out is that our position is, um, as well as, as Mr. Martin pointed out, um, the understanding of the appellant and staff and your assistant county council was that this issue was, was, was done. But, um, but, but even if you don't think it is, um, the way that your code is written, the odor control requirements allow two options. The first option is dealing with fans. And the second option is the one that this applicant is proposing. So you have in your code an option to utilize an alternative method or technology to achieve equal to or greater odor mitigation than provided by the fans. And we are doing that. And we have a licensed engineer in the state of Oregon who analyzes and prepares reports who will tell you, and has told you, that this method will more greatly control odor mitigation than the fans. And, and he's here today, and I'd like to bring him up now to explain to you a little bit more about this technology.
Yeah, I'd be interested in hearing, yes, I'm saying yes, hearing that. Just kind of give us the rundown of, of course, you know, kind of volumes, what's measurable? And how, i- is there examples of this working in industry?
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, my name is Roger Whitaker. Excuse me. I'm a mechanical and acoustical professional engineer in Oregon. And, um, yes, you know, per the code, uh, the first part was, was fans, but it's also filters. And so, uh, most commonly, we're talking about the activated carbon filters. Uh, worked on another project here, actually in the city of Bend. Uh, they use activated carbon filters, and that's performing well. Um, there is a higher cost, operating costs, energy costs, and, uh, for, for using carbon filters. And when we looked at ionization, um, it has an excellent track record, not only in the cannabis industry, but wastewater, you know, treatment plants, uh, those types of things. Um, and as I mentioned, I did go to Portland where, uh, there is an ionization process in a, in a much larger indoor grow room. And what is beneficial with ionization over carbon, activated carbon filter systems, is that with ionization, you're actually treating the smell, the odors at its source. Walk into the room with indoor grow happening, and you don't smell the marijuana indoors. So any air that escapes the building is already treated. And so it, uh, obviously, i- it solves the odor control issue, but also maintains a, a more healthy environment. A healthy, I guess, a less odorous environment inside the building. Um, I just worked with Yamhill County on another project. That applicant, he wanted to use both. You don't need both, but that's what he, he chose. So he's using activated carbon filtering system and ionization. Uh, so, uh, it's, uh, it's pretty straightforward. Uh, your first option for fans and, 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 you know, filters. And I think it's actually, uh, well-written, 'cause that's exactly the engineers that design these activated carbon filter systems. They follow that general rule of replacing, um, having your fans, uh, filters are required cubic feet per minute size, so that you, uh, get one, you notice here, the, um, the volume in the room is being exchanged about one-third, um, one-third every, uh, what do you say, every minute? So in three minutes, you have a full air exchange inside the building or the room that you're treating the odors for. So, uh, ionization, similar technology in terms of, uh, repla, you know, having enough ions out there to, to treat the, uh, the volume of the, of the room indoors. Uh, so both technologies work, both have, uh, a good track record. With the carbon filters, the, the better track records are those that actually, uh, stay on top of replacing the filters. They do clog up, so to speak, and you have to do that. That's not a problem with ionization. There's a cost savings and an energy savings long-term with ionization, although the cost upfront, uh, could be a bit, bit more. But from, uh, from, you know, good engineering principles and practices, I would say ionization is the, is the better choice if the applicant, uh, agrees to invest in that. So hopefully that gives a, a sort of overall rundown.
I just had a question. The facility you visited in Portland, how big was it?
Um, uh, it was about, somewhere between 40,000 and 60,000 square feet total. Now.
Thank you.
And, sure.
Did they have a carbon filters too?
Uh, they did not. They just had, uh, the ionization. And, and to Commissioner Dara, that was just the grow room area. They have other parts of the building too. It's a much larger building in, in, overall, so.
Okay.
Yep. Thousands, a lot of square feet.
Yes.
Um, a question about that also. Uh, how many units did they use at that, uh, facility? Do you know? I'm, I'm talking about the, you know, the pictures you've presented show the, whatever they are, the tubes.
Ionizers.
Doesn't seem like it's very big, or I don't know how many you need.
It fits in the ductwork, the supply ductwork. Yeah. And so, um, so I think, um, I, I have it in the record, uh, how, how it's sized and designed. Um, and those, um, the ionizers are highly, highly controlled, computer-controlled. So you know exactly how many charged O2 ions are, are being distributed in the air.
Is that a third of the volume every minute?
That, that's, uh, that's for the fans and filters. Yeah, so.
But I'm saying that if you're taking that much out, you have to be bringing in that much in the supply line. So that's a huge amount of air. I mean, that's like more than the air in this room. I mean, every minute exchanging. So you're really pushing air out and put, pulling air in. And so how many of the, do you, I don't recall how many. I could look back at the report.
Yeah, I have that.
Planning for here.
Sure. Um, so, uh, and I worked with the ERISA, uh, engineers on this as well. They're, they're the ones that design and manufacture the ion, ionizers for this. Um, we ended up, um, for an 80,000 CFM airflow capacity, we designated eight, eight of those model, uh, 5550s for, for this.
And it looked like in the, uh, pictures that are in here, that those sit outside the building. Is that the case in this plan?
The, the ionizers actually sit inside the ductwork. Um, so that, uh, like here, you have a diffuser here. So there's fresh air coming out of that. So it'd be like that, uh, but it'd be ionized air that comes in, it circulates and, and removes the odors from the room.
There was something that, in the pictures, that was sitting outside. Was that just the HVAC?
Uh, yeah, yeah, just HVAC system.
Any part of the ionization?
That's correct. It's just, you, you need, you still need airflow movement. So you still have, uh, fans and, and HVAC equipment. I mean, it's not just odor control that we're concerned about, well, that an applicant would be concerned about. They're also concerned about temperature and humidity controls, right, for the, for, uh.
Do you know if there's any other ionization filter systems in, in central Oregon, or?
I'm not aware of, of them. Uh, activated carbon, I think, is, uh, the most common still. And, uh, and would definitely work for this project as well. Um, if, if you, if you took issue with ionization, then, um, it's an easy switch over. Nothing's been built here yet, right? So it can be designed upfront. Uh, it could be, uh, could go with activated carbon filters as well.
Glad, thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. Appreciate it.
The last thing I'd point out about odor is that, um, not only was Mr. Whitaker the only, um, licensed engineer to speak on this topic. In other words, there were no other experts that rebutted Mr. Whitaker's analysis. My memory of the record is that the only challenge, um, that was brought up anecdotally was that, um, was the generation of ozone as a byproduct of ionization, which sort of went to environmental standards. But again, the criteria in your code for odor talks about an alternative method or technology to achieve equal to or greater odor mitigation than by the fans. It has nothing to do with any environmental quality, um, you know, byproducts, or, or anything that doesn't have to do with the mitigation of odor. In other words, there's been no evidence in the record that this ionization technology does not, um, provide equal to or greater than odor mitigation.
Are you ready to wrap up?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Um, I'll, I'll leave it at that, and we will come back on rebuttal.
Thank you.
So I have a question for legal, um, Adam. So I think Ms., we, Ms. Selko addressed our questions about whether we're gonna discuss youth activity. And she said, "No new evidence can be offered." And I, I thought there could be new evidence if, I get, she said, "Any other possible interpretation that would, the applicant could practically know this was a youth activity." So is it new evidence allowed or not? Can?
I disagree with her assessment on that point. Uh, I do think, uh, that the Hughes County Code contemplates, uh, having an evidentiary hearing. What's the point of an evidentiary hearing if not to offer new evidence? Uh, the, the code also provides the board the discretion if they want to leave the record open. But there is, there is no discretion in our code, uh, that when we, we receive a remand, uh, we conduct a new, uh, hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Is Mr. Golucci still in the room?
I think he'll be right back.
Okay, great. All right. I was wondering. Dave, Mr. Golucci, it's actually your turn to speak now. It's your turn to speak now, if you would like to address the board. And, um, if you would like, if you need 10 minutes, you're the only person that is speaking on your side. I don't know how many minutes you need, but.
Well, I don't really have anything to add as far as what we, we do out there. I mean, the one thing, and I don't know if it makes any difference as far as youth center or not, but the numbers, that's the amount of students or lessons they give. But, you know, there's visitors and there's the kids' friends, like when the school bus stops there. Uh, there may be one student that gets out, but there's, I've seen up to five or six that climb out of there with them, 'cause they're their friends. And that's the safe place to go after school, you know? And the parents realize that. I thought I'd be less nervous this time.
It's okay.
Uh, and as far as, uh, these folks not knowing when they purchased the property. I mean, typically, I've bought a lot of places, and I think that's the owner of the property before, or supposed to disclose it. And that was the Robinsons. And they, they did know our activities. That sign's been out there for, which I don't know, a long time, before the place was even for sale.
So, yeah, I was gonna ask you about this. So you're saying the former, the former owner knew the activities?
Yes.
And did you, did you have any interactions with the buyer prior to them buying?
We haven't, but you know, it's, it's, it's farm, you know, your neighbors, and you talk, and, you know.
You, you have or you have not?
We have, yeah.
Did you have any before they bought the property?
Like I say, they knew, and not because of me, because we were newer to the area. But the, the neighbors, yeah, they have sat down with them.
So the buyers of the property, the applicant here has sat down, you, you're understanding is, okay, the former owner.
Former owners would know, yeah.
The Robinsons knew.
Typically, if there's a situation, but I don't know if they knew that, what they were planning to do. Uh, you kind of, that, Doug, the one that was here before, that, um, that was a question that he asked me, is because he's sold, he's moved on. He didn't want anything to do with this anymore. That was supposed to be their retirement home. And, and, you know, they, they didn't want this facility there, and that's why he fought it. But he's moved on since then.
Is, is that the, the prior owner of your property, or the one to the east?
Uh, it's basically the one that brought it to the hearing to begin with.
With the 4H?
Say his last name. It's, it's, it's in that paperwork.
Yeah. So you're saying that person said that they, they had talked to the-
You know, that's something you gotta disclose, that that's gonna happen. And, and typically, I think you do. If you know something that would discourage another party from buying it, um, you're supposed to disclose that to the buyers. But whether that happened or not, I don't know. Uh, and the, the topic keeps bring, gets getting brought up about the, uh, permits and necessary. We had a big sit-down with the county, and according to them, we are doing what we're supposed to as far as, you know, the EFU use of our property. And we're not breaking any rules. No permit, permits for what we're doing are supposed to be necessary. And then the only other thing on this odor thing that I was kind of concerned about is, okay, this, this machine or whatever, I guess it breaks down these particles? I'm guessing. The, the particles of the smell, I guess, gotta go somewhere? Or do they just evaporate into nowhere? Are they, is this something that's gonna fall to the ground? And then, I mean, this, this place, that, the canal is right there. Is this something that's gonna leach into the canal? Is it something that's, uh, gonna leach into our groundwater in 10 years or 20 years, as long as they're doing what they're doing? That, I don't know that. Do they have it completely contained so that that won't happen? Is it, is it harmful to other people? Or do they have chemicals and whatnot that it's, it's, that they're gonna spray on these plants? That's a long-term thing. And then, once that happens, how do, how do people identify that? And all of a sudden, you got contaminants in your water well. How, how does, how do you say, "Well, you caused it," or "It wasn't somebody else down the road?" Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Golucci. Um, we do have one additional. Uh, Chris Olson. Chris, would you care to identify yourself for the record?
Chris Olson, I live right next to the property. I'll make it short. I guess the word practical was a little surprising today. Of how long this has taken. Uh, you guys made a decision on what a youth activity center was. I don't know why we're back here. Um, practical, if you're looking at the, the properties affected, there's probably five at most that are directly affected. There's no no trespassing signs. There were, well, if you were gonna spend this much money on this operation, you'd think you could walk down the driveway and say, "Hey, this is what our plan is. What do you do here?" What do you do here?" You know, especially when they've got a sign out. And so I don't, yeah, you know, if they were going to spend this much dough, I think you would have walked down their driveway and knocked on her, knocked on her door. And the comparison to buying a home, normally when you buy a home, you don't put an industrial building up in a cyclone fence. So I don't know, the comparison to buying a house is crazy. That's all I got.
Thank you for speaking today.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What I had, so which side of the property do you live, live on?
Right here.
Okay, so you live to the east of the, okay. And the prior testimony about the person that had filed the appeal that has now sold the property is right north of you?
No, that property was right here, I believe.
Oh, okay. And when you say five are affected, are you talking about the ones on the east?
Well, if you're looking, you know, here's my property, my neighbor's property. There's one, two, three or four houses around there, you know?
Okay.
So, yeah, I didn't go out and count directly out. And, you know, if they're going to build this thing here, here's my house, my neighbor's house, their, their place across the street.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, do you know where the 4-H one was held?
Yeah, right here.
Okay.
Here's our, but this is sort of like a little corral and stuff, so...
Okay.
You're, you're the one that does the 4-H activities that we keep talking about? That's okay.
That you've already determined was a youth activity. So you guys already decided that. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming. Okay. So Corinne, do you want to have 10 minutes of rebuttal then?
Sure, thank you.
For the record, Corinne Selko with Emerged Law Group again on here on behalf of the applicant. I'll start with some of Mr. Olson's comments, which, which reiterate some of Commissioner Henderson's prior comments that, you know, why don't you just knock on the door? And I think the question to, the answer to that is, when we talk about notice, and when Luba talks about notice, we're talking about objective ways of identifying whether certain uses exist. It shouldn't be the case that an applicant must rely on the statements of another property owner, which could be a misunderstanding. Perhaps a property owner doesn't know that what they're doing requires permits or licenses or land use approvals. Perhaps a property owner doesn't want to have a new neighbor. Perhaps they don't want a different use to be on a property. And so they're going to say that they have a particular use at their property that actually isn't ongoing. The only way to prevent that sort of thing from happening is to have objective ways of notifying an applicant that a use, a particular legal authorized use is happening. And I don't think that there's been any evidence that that is the case. I would, I wasn't at any such meeting that Mr. Galucci had with the county, although I, I challenge the statement that the county would say that no permits are necessary for what he's doing. I'd appreciate clarification with regard to what it is that he's doing that, that doesn't require permits. I don't know if Mr. Gatawski is here or someone else from the county can elaborate for you, but, but I, what is in the record is your event permit ordinance and the requirements for what needs to happen to have certain gatherings or commercial activities on a property for a certain number of people. And the evidence in the record that was submitted previously shows that with the current understanding of what's happening at the Galucci property, those event permits would be required. Mr. Galucci also testified to something that we talked about before that creates ambiguity, and that is not a practical way of identifying what types of uses are taking place. He said that oftentimes, friends would come on the property. It sounds like this is a popular place to be, not because it's a youth activity center necessarily, or a, a place that has, was constructed specifically for the purpose of educating youth, but rather, it's a fun family. How, how would an applicant know whether or not? It's just a fun family with big family members, generations living around each other who come to congregate with each other, which is something entirely different than the plain meaning of the three words "youth activity center." This is a unique situation in this case. Here, the former appellant in this case is gone. That property has sold, and those appellants are not here today to support their cause. Their former lawyer, Liz Dixon, is not here today to support that cause. The purported youth activity centers weren't even on that appellant's property. But, but they are no longer here challenging the approval of this facility. What you have before you is all of the facts, all of the evidence, all of the testimony to demonstrate that there was no practical effective way to know, for the applicant to know, that this unpermitted, unlicensed, illegal use was occurring on the Galucci property. There is no practical effective way for the applicant to know that bi-weekly 4-H club meetings were happening in a rural residential home. On the odor issue, you have all of the facts, evidence and testimony before you to show you that the alternative method of ionization mitigates odor equal to, if not greater than, the fan system that your code requires. And your code specifically allows this type of alternative system of odor control. We've been here for two years. We, we are ready. There's, there is nothing more. Nothing has changed, and there's nothing more that you would need to know to be able to make a decision in this case. No one has asked you to leave the record open. We believe that you have all the information necessary to deliberate and to vote on this action item today. For all of the reasons discussed today in the materials in the prior proceeding before you, we ask you to approve this applicant's marijuana production facility. Thank you.
Thank you.
One question.
Go ahead.
Is there anything that precipitates out of ionizing, you know, system? So that was mentioned, you know, does, is something going to drop to the ground?
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate the opportunity to, to speak to that. The ionization happens within the building. And just to keep it really simple, it would be, you can't see odor. You can smell it, but you can't see it. But you've seen sunlight come through the window and seen dust particles floating around. It, it all happens inside. The VOCs or the odors are essentially oxidized by the ions, which makes them harmless, and they just fall to the floor. So sweep the floor once in a while, and you're good.
Impipitating out is true, but it's an inert thing?
Removes it from the, from the air, and basically it lands as, again, dust, but you're not going to see it. But, you know, you're going to, you're going to sweep the floor once in a while, and...
Internal, internal.
It's all internal, and it's harmless. Yep.
While you're here, one of the questions I had about this, when you talk about doing an exchange every, a third of the building every minute, that volume, that's a lot of ionization fast. I mean, and so it's just kind of a, I mean, like you said before, imagine taking all the air out of this room in a minute, and all of it has to have been ionized and had any odor. And I'm familiar with the odor that comes from an intensive grow, so just, that's practical, and you've seen that.
Correct. The, again, back to the, the fans and, and filters. The way the code is written is that one-third of the volume of the building would be exchanged per minute. So after three minutes, you get a full air change.
Well, I'm just, this building's big enough, it's about three times the size of this room or so. I mean, it's a lot, so I'm just using this much air or something like this. Yeah, okay.
Sure. And the ionization process, I mean, it's, it's, it's dialed in to handle the odors that are in, in, in the room, and so that it becomes odorless. No, no more ions that are needed are, are being, you know, diffused through the space, so...
Thanks.
Thank you.
So Ms. Selko, I have a couple of questions. I don't know quite how, and maybe they're for Mr. Rosen, but did, did you or did he know of these criteria before you purchased the land? I mean, one of the parts of notice would be, gosh, I'm thinking about doing a marijuana grow in rural Deschutes County. What are the standards? Were you aware of these? Or was Mr. Rosen, probably is more important, but if you were advising him at that time, maybe you'd be more likely to know?
These standards were available at the time that the property was purchased. And yes, the applicant was aware of the standards that they needed to meet in order to operate a facility here.
So can Mr. Rosen, he hasn't testified today, does he mind just...
I'm happy to. I'm David Rosen, hi.
So we're, yeah, so you, when you bought this property, were you allow, aware of these criteria? I mean, there are, Deschutes County has a unique set of things we look at compared to other counties. We've created, you know, Oregon legislature gave commissioners the right to create reasonable regulations. That was done in '16, but were you aware of that?
We hire counsel to make sure that we don't make mistakes like that. So we develop these facilities all across the country, and each municipality has their own regulations. So we hire local counsel, and Corinne Selko is one of the best land use attorneys in the, I'd say, country, but we'll just say Oregon. Emerged Group is highly respected. And of course, before we would go and invest this type of money, we would look into whether it's a compliant piece of land or not.
Do you, do you mind describing what steps you did take to make sure that this, you weren't going to automatically violate any of the criteria that way?
Well, I, it was so, years ago, so it was a couple of years ago. So if my memory serves me correctly, we identify the property, we hire a land use attorney, and we have them vet to make sure that there's no problem with the land. And there's correspondence that I'm sure that we could supply going, dating back, you know, with our diligence, if that's something that, that's helpful to you, Commissioner.
So are, so you represent a company then, or you're part of a company?
I am.
So the company purchased the property?
Correct.
I can't remember that fact. So did you personally come out and look at the property? Had you been on the site, or is it...
Yes. Sure, I've been on the site many times.
But I mean, before you purchased it?
Before you bought it.
Yes.
Were you aware of any, either of those activ, of the things that are...
Not at all. Again, it was a while ago, but I remember a 100-acre farm. I couldn't see past the property lines. I couldn't, you can't see the neighbors, at least I couldn't. But, but more than that, I believed, because of our attorneys, that we were looking at a compliant piece of land, that it was already vetted, that this was, I was looking at it to see the slope, where we would put the facility. But there was no question whether this was compliant or not. That, the vetting had been done.
Okay, that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, we got another?
No other questions?
All right.
Questions to speak?
Well, can we do it?
If you're going to do it, you'd have to give the applicant another opportunity to rebut it.
Just come back up.
And this is a matter on the, from the previous hearing, so a person of record? Would we, it wouldn't be a person of record?
It's from Rondo.
I don't know what he wants to talk about. I didn't read.
Keeping the hearing more open for more public opinion.
I think he's making a request to hold the record open. He's not a party to the hearing, so...
Right.
If you choose to, it's within your discretion to hold the record open if you choose to. There hasn't been a formal official request to hold it open. And so it's really within your province in which to do that, recognizing, I think, April, early April's the due date for a decision.
Fourth, isn't it? Okay.
But that would be an issue on that?
Okay.
So I had a question about further, well, not about further testimony. I guess I can ask now. So my question was, this issue about the legality or illegality in the meeting with the county, is that something we would need to hear evidence on? Or, I mean, we really haven't discussed that before.
You could have that information today. Nick's here. You could have it put in the record if you hold the record open. I think Nick was at that meeting, so you could probably go right to the...
But again, I would... Is that appropriate to do now, or...
It is, but I believe you need to give the applicant an ability to, for limited rebuttal on that, whatever it is that Nick says.
Okay. Nick?
Commissioners, I'll start in, Nick, because this was also an issue that was well-briefed in front of Luba. So the position we took in front of Luba, the argument we made...
Could you define it, just so we're all on the same page here? You know, I know what's going on, but I'm just, could you elaborate? Because, yeah, as it's happening.
Yeah, there's been a contention for quite some time that the Rhinestone Ranch operation is, quote, "illegal" because it does not have a land use permit. Following their testimony in the original hearing on this matter, Nick and Peter met with the Rhinestone Ranch property owners on a couple of occasions. I'll let Nick speak to those, to those meetings, but the information that county staff was told in the meeting led to CDD making the determination that a land use permit was not required because this is an equine facility, which is part of a farm use operation allowed outright in an EFU parcel. Commissioner Adair asked Peter Gatawski during one of the work sessions in preparation for the deliberation about that issue. He reported the same thing at that time. It's our position, and what we argued in front of Luba, that that was a separate land use decision. It has a separate record, it has a separate process, and that nobody appealed that separate land use decision. Certainly, the, if the applicant wasn't aware of that separate land use decision based on the minutes from the meeting at the work session, they were certainly aware of the separate land use decision based on how we briefed the issue in front of the Land Use Board of Appeals. So I would say, beyond noting that that separate land use decision, in fact, it did occur, there's not too much more that needs to be brought into these proceedings. As noted, it is a separate, separate matter, has separate records, has its own separate appeal path, or had, all opportunities to appeal since passed.
So question is, so that's not part of this record of this? Because it was kind of alleged during the original hearing that, hey, you know, is that authorized activity across the street? So then there was a meeting and determination made. Is that part of this record at all? The record before it went to Luba, I guess, is what I'm referring to? Because it was mentioned at Luba.
Yes, it was certainly mentioned in front of Luba, and to the extent that there was a question about it in one of the work sessions and a response from staff in that, to that question, those were reflected in the minutes. And that was certainly part of the record that went to Luba.
Okay.
So are you, just so I make sure I get it right. So you're saying the meeting after deliberations was a land use decision?
For the record, Nick Leelak, Deschutes County Community Development Director. During the first public hearing on this issue, the issue was raised of Rhinestone Ranch. That issue had not come up during the staff review. During the hearing, Peter Gatawski, Adam Smith, and I heard the testimony about the activities occurring on that property. So we reached out to Rhinestone Ranch for a subsequent meeting prior to your deliberations. We met with the Rhinestone Ranch team. Peter and I were there. There may have been a couple of other people there. I remember it was a fairly large meeting. And the purpose of that meeting was to really understand what was occurring at Rhinestone Ranch. They, they described it. We then said, "Let's meet again after the holidays." So this was just about a year ago now, if I recall correctly. Maybe it was longer ago than that, but about, about... Maybe it was longer ago than that, about, quite some time ago. And that gave us the opportunity to discuss it internally. What is this that they're, that they're conducting on the property? We also brought in environmental soils, Todd Cleveland, to find out what onsite septic systems may or may not be required or allowed. We discussed it with our building official, Randy Scheid, what buildings can be used for various things, for occupancy, et cetera. And then in consultation with legal counsel, we made the verbal determination. We don't, and we put something in writing for the record, that it was, it qualified as an equine facility based on the activities that they described to us.
So we heard, just so I'm clear about the testimony we heard today, it relates this, we heard that this is the first time we've had this issue of a youth activity center not being a legal thing. So you're saying it is a legal thing? That's, that is kind, that's new evidence for the remand evidence you're hearing, right?
No, technically, Commissioner, you, the commissioners were informed of that decision prior to your deliberations in the first proceedings.
So, okay.
Yes.
I just don't remember it being raised as that big a thing, but.
I do remember.
I remember it was on the.
Simply stated, it has been the county's consistent position that it is not an illegal use and in fact, it does not require a land use permit. That is a land use decision and nobody has appealed that land use decision.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Again, our recommendation is that the applicant have an opportunity to rebut that issue today.
I was going to just let Rondo come up now then, at the same time?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, Rondo could come up now and then she'll have it.
I would caution against that. He was not a participant in the first.
Oh, that's correct. That was the rule.
On a remand, the participation is limited to only those folks who testified before.
Thank you for reminding. Sorry, Rondo. I tried to balance it.
The rules, sorry.
I tried. Okay.
For the record, Corinne Selko again. In response to what you just heard from Assistant County Counsel and Mr. Leelak, what you heard was the position by the county that, that, that discussion at the work session constituted a land use decision. And that was briefed to Luba and Luba did address it. So on page 12 and 13 of the Luba opinion, it says, "At that work session, county planning staff explained that petitioner had argued that the horse-related uses on the Rhinestone Ranch constitute a farm use and not a youth activity center. The county planning staff opined that, quote, 'equine use on the property for training, riding, and education', dot, 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 appears to qualify as farm use,' end quote. The county also points to the original staff report, which supported the administrative approval, in which staff opined that the 4H youth agricultural activities are a function of and accessory to the residential and farm use, farm uses of the adjacent property and thus did not constitute a youth activity center. The county argues those determinations constitute separate final land use decisions that petitioner did not challenge by filing separate appeals and thus those decisions may not be challenged in this decision. The county is mistaken." That's in the Luba opinion. I would argue that regardless of what was discussed in that work session, if it's the county's position that what is happening on the Rhinestone Ranch do not require permits because it's an equine facility, a farm use, then there is absolutely no way that an applicant would be put on notice or have any practical way of identifying that equine facility farm use as also a separate youth activity center. That's all I have.
Thank you.
So just, again, that kind of goes back to what I asked originally, is even if, because I've got the decision in front of me too, I see what you're saying, what you're reading, that at that point, it hadn't been a decision, but it, the evidence could be introduced today that they feel they've made a decision and so it could be evidence for this remand. It seems like to me, is that, I guess, do you have any?
Commissioners, if I may, and of course, I'm sure you'll have an opportunity to respond. And I don't mean to be overly argumentative, but it was never county staff's position that the statement made during the work session was that that statement during the work session was a land use decision. Rather, the statement was reporting to the county commissioners that a land use decision had been made. It was a separate matter, happened in a separate time. It wasn't that the statement during the work session was a land use decision. The county staff was just reporting to the commissioners that, yes, we made a land use decision on this matter.
Can I ask a question, though? Just to clarify, that land use decision was not itself made part of the record, just the statement that one had been made?
The only thing in the record was a reflection or an answer to the county commissioners that a separate land use decision on the matter had been made. Yes. Am I answering your question?
I think, I think I understand you to say that it was just a statement, so that the only thing in the wave seer record is the statement that at a separate time, a separate land use decision had been made.
The only thing in the wave seer record are the minutes from the work session that reflect, and they're just minutes, it's not verbatim, and they reflect that Commissioner Adair asked a question of Peter Gatauski. Peter Gatauski answered that question.
But now it's different. Now we've got evidence in an evidentiary hearing that that decision was made. So it seems like it's in a different class than it was when it was appealed to Luba. Is that, am I, I mean, that was that whole question we talked about at the start, are we getting new evidence? So isn't that new evidence?
I think the fact that a separate decision was made is not necessarily new evidence in front of the commissioners. I think it was the same answer to the question that you were told previously. Certainly, county staff can provide new evidence. We can, we can write with a lot more particularity what occurred and why it occurred and we could try and recollect what information was told during the meetings and that written document would perhaps constitute new evidence.
But you would be kind of saying what, or writing what you've said essentially. And so the point is, we could, applicant's attorney has made a strong argument that not only, you know, over here, these activities don't qualify, but also the thing itself is illegal. And so we need to, in a way, we need to deal with both of those. So the way we deal with the second part of that is evidence that it is legal. So we, it sounds like when we were just told about the decision during deliberation, that's different than now when we're, we're in an evidentiary gathering period. I, I don't know, maybe I'm overstating it. Is that right? Is that your?
Yeah, I don't want to put words in applicant's attorney's mouth, but I thought, I think the argument that she put forth is that, that the determination that the equine use is, is a allowable farm use does not equal that it's an allowable youth activity center and that that would be the illegal activity, a youth activity.
Well, that's what she just said. But before, she'd made a big thing that it was illegal period, so.
Yeah, and I, I don't know, I can't get in her mind. I don't know if, if it was just maybe not as, as specific on the wording, but.
All right. I think I.
I mean, I think we all understood it was some sort of horse activity on a farm parcel. And I suspect most of us would conclude that's a lawful use on a farm parcel.
Especially in Deschutes County.
Yeah, now whether it has the additional overlay of a youth activity center official with blessings and all that, I think was the bigger issue. But Corinne, she can answer that question better than I.
My concern on this matter remains the awkwardness of bringing in what is occurring on an adjoining parcel and adjudicating the legality of that use as part of these proceedings. Those property owners have procedural rights. They have, there's a mechanism for addressing those issues. There's opportunity to address those issues. None of those things have occurred. I mean, as you know, the county has a very robust code enforcement process. There's a way to deal with all of those issues in a more procedurally sound way. And that's always been county staff's, at least, position on this particular matter.
And if I could respond to that, to be clear, the applicant has no issue with the Rhinestone Ranch itself. The applicant is not trying to bring up code enforcement issues. The sole reason for bringing the legality of the use into question, which I think is totally relevant and important, is that, is in defining what constitutes a youth activity center. And if, if a use that would require a land use decision as a commercial activity in conjunction with farm use or would require event permits because it's hosting X amount of people doing certain things for X amount of days, that is important. And I don't think that you can have a definition to allow something to be, to constitute a youth activity center if that use is not authorized, is not permitted, is not licensed, does not have the proper land use approval.
And that's what I, that's what I heard you to say.
That is what I'm saying. And then the second thing I'm saying is that to the extent that you've already determined what that use is, that that use is a farm use, an equine facility farm use, it cannot also be, there's no notice that it would also be a youth activity center.
Yeah, that's, that's what I heard. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I would recommend that the board consider closing the hearing portion today and then you have a question, whether you want to hold the record open. There hasn't been a request. There's no legal requirement for you to hold the record open. You could close the hearing and the record today and set a date for deliberations.
Okay.
Matt might want to add to that.
No, but happy to consider and coordinate those schedules. If I can make one point of clarification, as the purchase of the property was considered and discussed today, the current owner of record is an individual by the name of Peter Windsor. But I have confirmed with the applicant that Mr. Windsor is a partner or a member of WaveSeer of Oregon LLC and the company has entered into escrow to purchase the property. So I know that there was a question or raising the time of purchase and investigations during that time period. So I wanted to clarify that for the record.
Thank you. So, do you know other issues? Should we then close the record today? And can we ask, do you have anything?
Well, so, I mean, I'm, yeah, close the oral testimony. I'm, I would like to have the record, in the record, what the finding or the decision of the TDD was because it is being argued that, that the use is illegal. If we prove it is legal, then we decide, well, is legality a standard for a youth activity center? Does that, is that one of the things we should look at too? Just like they said we had to look at foreseeability, legality would be one. Is that a, and I would think it is, but we'll debate that or discuss it. But I, I'm interested in knowing whether it is too, I guess, and how we know it is or whatever. Because it, it is what, I'm worried, that's what the applicant's arguing. I mean, she has several arguments, but that's one of them that we have, it seems like we should deal with in the decision.
Well, and I, I think I go the other way here, the fact that, you know, there has been discussion, it's been determined no permitting required, it's a farm activity on a farm, so I don't see any hook to, you know, using this as a definition. Which, you know, we're just talking about the record at this point, so I, I mean, I would support closing the oral and written record on this matter at this time.
Okay. So Dave, do you have any feeling on that as far as the legality issue? Would it be better to have that clarified in our record?
You know, I'm always a proponent of more process versus less, so I don't know if you're comfortable with the timeline, there's any harm in giving a 777. That would give the applicant an ability to rebut anything that comes in from anybody withstanding to put anything in the record and then also have final argument as well. So, and I think that'd keep you well within your early April decision timeline. But it's really your choice. At the end of the day, if, you know, what at least two of you want to do, kind of decide it. And I support that process statement. You know, I mean, I'm not opposed to that. I just, I wasn't, I don't see, you know, the issue I wouldn't ask for.
777 then?
Can I make a point of clarification? Just, just to clarify, the, the applicant has not asked, has in fact asked for the record to be closed. Although there may be more time on the clock for a decision, we've been waiting for two years. And so we are asking to have the record closed. If you decide not to accept that request, then we, we request a shortened timeline for the record to be left open because no one is asking for it to be left open.
We were. We were asking for it to be left open seven days.
So if the board's inclined to do that, then if you were to hold it open 777, that'd be until, the first open period would be for anybody to submit anything relative to these remand issues by 5:00 PM a week from today. Anybody that chooses to submit any rebuttal, again, assuming the appropriate standing to be involved in that, would have seven days for that. And then the applicant would have an additional seven days for final written argument. So acknowledging parties withstanding, which is a subset of people involved in this matter.
But, but for instance, there would be, that would be anybody that had put in a letter. We have quite a few letters from neighbors, so.
Anybody that's participated.
If one of them had evidence about knowledge by the buyer that certain things were going on or any of the thing, this is the first time we've ever discussed this whole issue of foreseeability and what's reasonable. So it would allow anybody that asked, is working today or watching it to put in a follow-up letter of, well, I think it's foreseeable for this or, we've never, we've never thought about it. But I'm sure people that live in the neighborhood who've been pretty outspoken might have something to say and maybe the applicant would too.
Certainly, Luba did make that an issue, the foreseeability. I think that's a given. That's sort of a subset, I guess, of due process and, and if there isn't this foreseeability, something, you know, boots on the ground, obvious, then how would folks know that, that activity on a farm parcel is anything other than farm-related activity? And so that's, yeah, so I think that Luba did interject that issue of foreseeability. If, if the board feels that a 777 open record period would assist in flushing that out better, then by all means, it's within your providence to, to go ahead and provide for that 777 and, and just recognize it is going to shrink your deliberation and final decision window down by three weeks.
Okay. I mean, this is Deschutes County. We do have 4H activity here. And if you've been to our county fair, you'd see that the youth, especially the rural youth are, they participate in 4H and it's, it's not, it's a, it's a special part of our county. And I, you know, I feel like Luba has put such a pressure on the youth of Deschutes County that, you know, so there's that clarity there that people know that, you know, kids in the neighbor, in the rural neighborhood, that's, that's what they do. So if we do that, Matthew, how does that put it with the 777?
Yes, so with your, your direction to leave the record open for those time periods, the, the deadline for new information is 5:00 PM on February 5th. The deadline for rebuttal to information already in the record is 5:00 PM on February 12th. And then final arguments are due by 5:00 PM on February 19th.
Can I email Matt?
Email to matt.martin@deschutes.org or in person or in, in writing via post. Thank you.
And then subsequent to that, based on the board's schedule, it would be appropriately noticed when the deliberation would be. I'm guessing it would probably be sometime towards the beginning of March to provide a few weeks thereafter to draft up a final decision.
Okay.
I do have another meeting to be at right across the hall here, so I'm going to excuse myself at this time.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner DePone?
I may share also just experiences with email delivery. Please afford yourself ample time to, for it to move through cyberspace. We have had some technical difficulties where message is sent just prior to 5:00 PM, but it's received after 5:00 PM. So just take that into consideration in delivery of any email.
If it's greater than 20 pages, you, and color issues, we need the hard copies?
Correct. Yeah, thank you for that.
Okay, great. Thank you, Matthew. All right. All right.
Do we have other things?
No. Do we have anything on our...
We did have two executive sessions, or one, on a litigation matter out of the sheriff's office that Don and Chris would like to brief the board on and get some guidance.
Okay.
I would suggest if that's all we have left, that maybe we take a five-minute break and reconvene upstairs.
Okay, five-minute break, then, we will reconvene upstairs. Thank you very much.